Time is 6:00 PM. Council of the City of Edison will not convene a regular session. I will start with the invitation. Father God, we thank you for today. Thank you again for the changing seasons, spring upon us. Thank you for the creation and all that we get to see you around us. Father, we pray for this council and this community as we turn matters of the city about that you would give us wisdom. And thank you for this community that we live in and all those that make it just the wonderful place that it is.
United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal for all.
Agenda item number two, proclamations and presentations. Mr. Cogge, would you come up? We've got a special presentation tonight to folks from one of our local industries, our new industry, I guess, we have, so I'll let this guy start.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a great privilege to be here tonight with my new friend, Chang Jang, President of Visionary Industrial Insulation. Chang and his team have been working for several months, which I think most of you are aware of, in converting forty thousand square feet of the former Safeway warehouse into a high-tech, cutting-edge manufacturer of industrial insulation. And I'll ask Chang to introduce his management team, and then following that, I know the Mayor and the Council want to recognize some of the teammates, team members from South Korea that have made this plant possible. Chang?
Men and ladies and gentlemen, we really appreciate, and we are very glad to be here tonight. Let me introduce our members for Visionary Industrial Insulation. Mr. Ross Warner and Dan Foskett, and Sharon and Lori.
Thank you, Chang. This time, we're going to have our four guests from South Korea come up. And I think the Council and the Mayor has a few words and proclamation for our guests.
Yeah, can I get a balance? All right, and Mayor will... Very good. Proclamation of the City of Edison, Texas, where as Edison, Texas, is a pro-business community that welcomes any and all individuals who are committed to assisting in the development of our local businesses. And whereas the success or failure of any business or organization depends on the dedication of its workforce. And whereas the dedication has been demonstrated, not only by words but by actions at Visionary Industrial Insulation, doing the hard work day in and day out, in the cold and the damp, beginning in the dark and ending in the dark. And whereas the dedication is proven by doing whatever is asked, whatever is required, no matter the task be outside of one's primary duty and responsibility. And whereas it's an especially notable sacrifice to leave the comforts of one's home and family and travel halfway around the world and accept responsibility to construct a solid foundation for others to also build on. And whereas it is a good and proper to recognize these real and significant sacrifices that have been made by highly skilled group of new friends from Korea. Now therefore, the City of Edison, Texas wishes to express their heartfelt thanks and appreciation for the many months of hard work, dedication, quality, and substantial personal sacrifice that has been shown by the team members of Visionary. Chang, if you wanted to introduce your fellows, we'll go one at a time. Okay. Dave Gilroy.
This is for Chunghang Zhang. This is for Chang Woo Sa. And this is for Kamook Kang.
Get a quick picture of this. One, two, three. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. And as you also recognize, Tony, before you head out, that is, by them going into that building, we are now a hundred percent occupied of all of our existing manufacturing facilities. That's good times in Edison, Texas. All right, agenda item number three, contend agenda. Have a motion in the second. All of them say aye. Aye, sounds like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, public hearing, Ms. Brock. Oh, sorry.
Mayor and Council, we have six properties to bring to you tonight, requesting that you proceed on the demolition of these properties. Two of the properties, we believe the owner is here for one of the properties, and the owner did not move beyond the second property. And when we get to those, I'll mention those properties as we get through the presentation. This is a map showing all six of the properties. The first one's 1208 West Crawford, and this is the front view of the property. That's the front door. It is open, and people can't get into this house. It's a side view of it. Another view showing the disrepair of the property. Other, and I believe that was pretty much, that last one. That property is open. Since it's open and open to children, to bankers, we would recommend demolition as well as the fact that it is in bad disrepair, structurally in bad shape as well. And the second one, we did get a call from an investor who was wanting to purchase the property at 414 West Walker. We informed him that the owner would need to make that replacement. The Council to extend that, to grant an extension on the demolition if the Council chose to do so. Because we really don't know if the owner even wants to sell it at this point, that they've not spoken with us. The property is actually in pretty good shape. The only issue that we have with this is that the front door is open all of the time. And we've gotten calls from many of the neighbors. They're concerned without children and other people getting into the building. And based on that, we recommend demolition of the building unless someone become in with some type of plan to propose picking the property up. The next one's 114 East Munson. The owner of this property has also met with me and is wanting to request an extension at that time. This is a view of the front. We've also gotten complaints on this one as well. This shows that the wall on the right side of the building is not perpendicular to the ground. The code, the way it reads is that if you drop a plumb line from the top of the wall and that plumb line does not pass through the middle third of the bottom of that wall, that it's violation of the ordinance. And that clearly does not do that. It falls outside of that area. This also shows supports in the building that are at an angle leaning towards the front of the building, so it's shifted. Here's a view of the back of the building. Here's another view of the rear of the building. Based on the... And here's another view of the roof of the building. Apparently there was some tree damage caused by tree maintenance. Based on the structural damage to the building, the fact that it's moved, it's not supported very well, the fact that the walls are not straight, we recommend demolition of that building. The next one's 100 East Munson. Here's the front of that one. This shows the porch in bad disrepair. Shows the actual walking surface of the porch is gone on both sides. This is a big block. And this shows one of the walls over on the right side of the building. And it also shows the rear of the house is open. And based on the fact that the house is open, we have problems with the exits of the building, so that they're not safe, and the disrepair of the structure, we recommend demolition of that one. And a couple of others I forgot about. The next one's 300 East Tarrin. This is the front of that building. And here's the rear. You can see it almost looks like it's caving in into itself in the back. There's a porch on the back of it as well that's in very bad shape. Based on those issues, we recommend demolition of this building. And there's another view of that. I believe the last one we have is 718 West Texas. This is a home that was occupied. The owner has deceased. This is the left side view of this one. This is the rear side view of it. The exits are gone from the second floor. There were stairs there at one time. They're not there any longer. This shows the bad disrepair in the rear of the building. And then there's also a garage apartment in the back of the building. You can see there's no roof on this building anymore. It's just full of junk. Based on the issues, we recommend demolition of this building.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to these agenda items? Now we have Mr. Jim McBev. He would come forward. Well, name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Kelvin Butler, and I own the property on 414 West Walker. I live in Denton, Texas. And I have an investor here that's on the buy-in property. And I would like an extension. The front door is a little left open. We're closing it up and people keep opening it. And as you said, it's not in that bad of shape. It was built in eighty-four.
Mr. Bev?
Yes, I'm Jim McBev. And we're investors, and the property is not in that bad of shape. It wouldn't take that much to get that property back in good condition. I do it all the time. And I looked at it and it's in really good shape. Sure do.
Normally, the Council, when we have folks come at the last hour here, we agree to ten days to pull a permit, six months to complete the work. I think in this case, because you don't actually own it, there's going to be some time for closing, I'd like to recommend to the Council that we give them thirty days to pull a permit. If they give you enough time to close and be able to pull a permit, definitely. We're in the business of trying to clean up the community and rehab it. This facility would be a good thing, much better than demolition of the structure. So, any other questions from Council? Thank you. Thank you. Saw another hand, I think. Come forward, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Kenneth Traywick. I have the property at 114 East Munson. This is my grandparents' old house. And Mr. Jackson, I've talked on two or three occasions, and I think through my figures of the work, and sometimes I got some things messed up. But I have a contractor gave me a bid on doing the work, repairing this house. And the house looks a little worse than it actually is, but it is, far as I can see, a pretty sound structure. I've done this for several years. But Mr. Anoy Martinez, he's a general contractor, he's a son of... They gave you a bid to do the property, and they're wanting to work on the property and then purchase the property themselves. They want for an investment or move into themselves. I have several of the same pictures and a few others. His are proficient. But I'd like to request the Council give an extension on the house for them to be able to do that.
Mr. Traywick, and I guess Mr. Jackson, you do understand that if we give you an extension, there's immense amount of work and to bring up the code, not just putting a baton on it right here.
Right. What I was informed was I needed to level the house, replace, repair the right wood. Let's see what I should do. I've got two broken windows. The house is not open to the public room to get in. Someone kicked in the back door on the storage room in the back, but there's another security inside, the storage room you see right now. It was a covered porch now since it closed the porch. And this gentleman, Mr. Martinez, he's able to do the work. He said he could possibly do that work, secure the house, do the repair on the wood, level the house, and repair the two broken windows. And the roof repair, I'm sorry. We had a storm, neighbors from country, they crashed on the roof and put a hole up here with...
Mr. Jackson, I mean, does that sound alike?
Yes, sir. As I told Mr. Traywick, the main concern that we have on these four buildings is the exterior of the building. As long as the exterior was brought up to standards, then it would remove from the lift. And that would be the primary concern that we have.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Traywick, again, with the Council, historically it's done. We give you ten days to pull the permit?
Yes, sir.
And six months to complete the work?
That sounds great.
Yep.
Good question. Did he tell you before the work was done or... No, what he wanted to do, he said he was considering buying the house. And he did. He came by a couple of times, looked at it. So what I was doing, I asked him about giving me a bid on doing the work. And he's been doing it, I believe, twenty-five years in this area. And he got a general contract, I mean, a general contractor permit to do work on some other buildings around here. And like I say, he does very good work. I'm having a back off because I hurt my back and I pulled my right ankle out. So I can do some, but I can't do it all.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to one of these properties? There being none, the public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion that would remove, we'll take three separate actions here, that will remove 414 West Walker and 114 East Munson in the first motion.
Well, I think we need to take action with the parameters that we normally give out. That way we get that option to go forward in six months. So what we need is... Pardon? Okay. So if I'm going to repeat your motion, then Mr. Mallory, can you make sure I understand it correctly? We're going forward with the demolition of all the properties, with the exception of 414 West Walker, of which we're giving them thirty days to pull the permit, six months to complete the work. And with the exception of 114 East Munson, where we're giving them ten days to pull the permit, six months to complete the work. Is that your motion? A motion? And a second, if everybody say aye? Sounds like a sign. Motion carries. Yeah.
414 West Walker is one of the... 114 East Munson is the... Agenda item number five, work session, five A, street scape plan, Ms. Dow.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we are bringing some more information to you upon request for the street scape plan. So if it's okay, I won't go through all the cases of the original documents.
Okay.
Thought it might be. We'll start with the next slide, which shows, as you requested, how far, how much could we get and how far could we go. And so that shows a six-block area, and as you've probably seen in your packet, it's for 1.5 million and change. But it starts at Houston and takes in that intersection. Does not include the Austin and Main intersections, just because that's a little bit more complicated and be a project in itself, and has recently been redone with text dot projects. And then it comes on down all the way to Barrett and includes those. Those include mid-block crossings. And as you might have noticed on the cost figures, it includes twenty percent of repair work done throughout the project. And I'll show you some pictures of what that means in the end, but that's included in the cost. Do you have any questions on that figure one? I don't think there's any need to spend any time on the cost figures until you have questions possible. The next is a four-block area, and it is just right over one million in cost if we did the same work. To reiterate, we would not go report the sidewalks from building face to curb. It would be repaired, and the budget is twenty percent of the sidewalk area would need to be repaired. And that area would go from Austin and Eisenhower. Not include that intersection with Goldway and Myrick. And then we can go on to the last slide there that... What we put together here is our text application that is pending. It's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars construction cost. And so if we did that, you know, again, not reporting the sidewalks from building face to curb, but repairing as needed, what could we get out of that? And so as you can see, there's three complete intersections with the block on each side. The difference here is that there's only mid-block crossings in the two middle blocks that were included in that. Five hundred block does not currently have a mid-block crossing. The two hundred block does, and so we would possibly have some room. The cost figures are eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, and you know, that does have a fifteen percent contingency, so we would just have to see how that worked, or you know, we could possibly just choose and prioritize and be able to include that. So that's kind of what we were able to do for the proposed budget of the street. I just looked at my notes, and if you want to take that same slide and if we redid all the sidewalks like was originally proposed in the application, if you took from Burnett to the end toward Myrick, so it would be the left-hand portion of that, that would be what we proposed in the original application with the sidewalk replacement. So we would be leaving out essentially two blocks plus a crossing and intersection. Okay, we can move on to the pictures. This is just kind of some of the erosion, I guess you will, that we saw. And I wanted to show you these pictures so you would understand what might need replaced. That shows the paver area, and also we would replace the pavers because we would be putting utilities under there, like irrigation for the plant, planter area. You know, we thought it's important to have irrigation for those. The next picture just shows again some erosion on the sidewalks that, you know, it would look nice if it were repaired. And again, just saying where it's kind of been patched. I'll be going to answer any questions.
Questions from Council?
Now, the original, you mentioned the original grant, which was eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, which was text dollars being given up, and we committed a minimum of three hundred and fifty, possibly, to...
Yeah, I can get that budget figure for you right here. The construction was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, that...
I know, a lot of them are talking about it.
Yeah. And then there would be text administrated expenses, a fifteen percent, which is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and local match of twenty percent, which is a hundred and eighty-nine. So, you know, that would bring it up, let's see. Well, actually, the total project cost is nine forty-eight.
With the amount of ten percent contingency, something like that, even on our part, it's probably not... See, my part is closer to three hundred, but it's not...
I think what they had us do was fill in the contingency that they're lining out of, and so we had that. It's not showing in the application because they asked us not to, so we put it in the lining.
Personally, I like the four-block area. Even, you know, the first one, I did like the four blocks, where you could have a building for anybody to go in and work. But if there's a...
Yeah, and that'll all depend on when it comes time to build it, what it did that as.
Or if we were more than half.
Got like a full block in the area, so...
Yeah. I guess, remember to, this is the second slide, you should have been looking ahead one, four. One million dollars cost, so it's just a couple of... And it starts to, to Myrick and Myrick, they don't have...
And there's not, we're not approving what it would be. What we're saying, this is the guiding document. If we're fortunate enough to receive the grant funds, we'll know exactly at that point what we can do and what we can't do. But in essence, what we have is a plan that will address all six blocks listed for. I think this Federal Architectural Council's request for it from the last work session.
I'll second that. From the mayor's standpoint, we're not adopting a construction, set of construction drawings. If the city decides to go out between now and the grand award and plant trees on Main Street, we'll have a species list that we know have been approved and designed from these palette, from our urban color standpoint that we've all agreed to. It's just, it gives us a toolbox that we can use on the Main Street when we do improvements on them, whether they are some sort of major capital improvement or a minor one.
Any questions from Council?
I did have one other comment, one quickly. It is a document that we can use for city funding, and I did check into some other funding options. They are out there. It's totally limited by what we can match it with. So, you know, we can get ADA acceptable grants that will help us make it go farther, but you know, we have to match it and...
Can we use the money that we potentially receive from this grant to be matching dollars for other non-federal grants?
Probably non-federal, but normally you can't match federal, so...
Were any of those that you saw non-federal?
No, I just looked at federal.
Of course.
I wasn't proud enough to do that.
Other questions from Council? Mr. Bandman asked to speak at the agenda item. Name and address, please, for the record.
Yeah, I need to tell it, Bandman, I could do it. Five Manhattan West Main, and outside of the country across from... Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to briefly address you. There've been many good things going into Edison's way lately with the school, potential Creston Harbor, some developments there on eighty-four and seventy-five that may eventually come to fruition. And I think the street scape is one of those potential things to impact, characterize our town in the future. So to me, it's an important issue to understand economics are always limitations. Y'all have tough decisions to make. I'd love to have everything be as good as we can make it from the depot. Seven hundred, I just announced some things to give y'all some food to thought. 700, I just have some things to give y'all for food to thought. Being with my profession, I tend to go to downtown Sherwin several times a week. I bet Mr. Spindler has been there a couple of times too. And our sister Grace and Channel Community has gone for a street scape of their square area. And I just hope that the plan itself, we're trying to adopt, it's making impacts and we'll see some difference here. You just can get some ideas. In their case, it appears that primarily they were doing 88 corners. So how you can see what difference it can make on that first page in terms of replacing sidewalks versus the repair there. And it gives you just basically every corner there. So you kind of see what kind of stuff there. The last page will just kind of give you a green impact of the possibility. I know Kenny told that different city, but how they took upon the opportunity to lead for restaurants to have their spaces on the side of the street, much like my kid, our home state line really more than both leaves or got to each other, each restaurant might come downtown and basically that whole side of the block. And there's some others there just provisions they have. But I hope those will come into consideration so we can... The final decision be that it really makes an impact. I appreciate all kinds.
Questions, Council?
You know, since we posted this as a work session item, I think it's probably appropriate to wait to action. Final action at the 14th, we have a next council meeting in March. But if there are no additional changes to the plan, I think we are ready for council to adopt the plan with the understanding that a construction draw, set of construction drawings is simply a expanding field that you can use to accomplish some of these larger elements of Mr. Bandman's.
And then we'll move forward to the next meeting. Item number 5B, creation of the third code enforcement officer. Mr. Speaker?
Speaker. Mayor and council members, tonight we're asking the council to consider at a future meeting, authorizing the creation of a third code enforcement officer. Been about a year, the community government director is going to retire. And what we're trying to do now is put a plan into place on what those duties are going to do. Who's going to do those duties in the future? The position that it is today is not going to exist later. So what we are in the process of doing, we started moving the demolition activities to code enforcement. And they're working the code enforcement through that time. They'll repost it until it comes out to bits. The next step in that process is going to be the rehab program. Right now, we have an outside contractor that did our inspections work right up. The gentleman recently died. So it's a good time now, since we're starting over again with that process, to start moving that over to code enforcement, to do inspections. Code enforcement, the two officers that are there now are doing a fantastic job with minimum property standards. By adding more responsibility to those positions, I don't think that they would be able to provide the same local service they're providing today. What the plan is, to create that position and fund that with CDVG funds and with general funds. The CDVG portion would be 9% of the salary and 10% of the general fund. You all have seen the low to mod area map in the past several times. That code enforcement officer would be required to stay within those orange areas. The work there would have to be done in there. The minimum property standards, code enforcement activities, rehab activities, all take place in those low to mod income areas of town. That 10% is going to give him the flexibility to be able to move outside that area if they get into an area of town that's out in the low mod areas. They need some assistance there. The plan also is to rotate all three of the code enforcement officers through this area in future years. So they all get to leave with that process. The... If the position is approved and the position was advertised in April, there is money in the budget, both CDVG and general fund, to fund that position through the remainder of the program year. I'll answer any questions, Councilman.
I agree with Doug Stone, Tom Gill. CDVG funds are one of the items that have been identified since sequestration to be minimized. I think this is in working 7% to 8% reduction. And it's about a $24,000, $25,000, I think, dip, $29,000 to our CDVG funding. Probably nobody knows what's going to happen. Change tomorrow in Washington, it may not. But we need to assume that if long-term remain, has already taken place. And any offsetting or any change in funding relationship with the reduction in our available to supplement this position with CDVG funds would have to come from the general fund. I still think it's a worthwhile project to do. I just wanted council to be aware of that fact that if you get a notice from HUD saying, you can cut your funding by X amount, our percentage available for administration would then decrease that additional amount to come from the general fund to make that happen. It's still worthy to do. Even if we couldn't fund the position or augment the cost of the mission through CDVG funds, we need another code enforcement officer in this town. There's a lot of code issues in this town. We get a lot of phone calls about code issues. And the only way we're going to solve it, if people work in pace, we need to move some of the ground so it's big to get that done. But this is a really innovative way that Mr. Speakman and Mr. Jackson have come up with to solve that problem.
Did I get someplace in the pilot that it wasn't looking well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Speakman.
Like an apple today.
It'll be the third time.
So we're just kind of wandering lunch after?
Oh, bad monkey.
And that head count, we're just taking the structure.
Well, no, no, no. I think what Mr. Speakman alluded to is that we are, as a staff, we are making adjustments to change CDVG. We are increasing the head count by one. The city's workforce is in action. And I would have no intention of reducing that increased head count on Mr. Speakman's retirement. I do have some of my opposition, but I'm not prepared to discuss it.
So the CDVG, whether you can go with those strike?
20% of the grants. And there are other ways this can be structured too. In the past, what we would do is we would, if I was working on rehab, I could charge, I charged all my time to admin. It was just cleaner. But the grant was bigger and we could get all the salary out of CDVG at that time. As the years went by and that grant was decreased, we could get all the salary out of admin. So in checking with HUD, if I was working on rehab, I'd charge my time to rehab. If I was working on demo, did demo CDVG, I'd charge my time to demo. So that 20% cap was not exceeding admin. And the way that this position would be too, if we created a code enforcement officer, we could create a code enforcement line item, a rehab line item, and they can charge part of their salaries to that too, along with admin. It was a lot cleaner back when it was large enough to do just strictly admin. I didn't have to keep time sheets and all that. Now it's got to be time sheets and split those, everything. So it's a little more complicated now, but it's still doable.
How's our timeframe currently with building permits and inspections for working projects? I know we've got the schools on the ground and some other projects that were internally, internally. Are we covering those pretty well so far?
Absolutely. They're doing a fantastic job, yes.
Do we have a feeling for how much more, you know, capacity or business we could do with the term to add this other person? I'm assuming that's going to be 50% more. Is that what we're talking about, 30% more? I think you're handling.
It would depend on whether they're working on code enforcement, whether they're working on minimum property standards or whether they're working on rehab. They'll be working on all four of those areas. So it's hard to put a percentage on how much it's going to be for minimum property standards, how much it's going to be for code enforcement, how much it's going to be for rehab. But we found, as we move on with our minimum property standards, that we're getting more and more letters sent out and violations noticed and working those cases. So they are, they're staying on top of that now. They're doing a great job of that. But I feel that with the other duties, that what they would be asked to do, some of those are going to be probably not as capable as should be.
Just kind of get a future sense for construction, new homes that comes on, if we're going to need a fourth person, you know?
I want to clarify that. This wouldn't be a building inspection division. They wouldn't be involved in the new construction or construction inspection process at all. They would be part of the folks that made sure, once it was constructed, that it was maintained through codes and ordinances and zoning was maintained, hydrostatic weeds is maintained. Specifically, where we envision this person helping tremendously is with the minimum property standards. It's a labor-intensive process. And again, CDVG funding opportunity allows you to do something that probably wouldn't normally allow to be afforded with the general fund.
Can you give me a breakdown of that department, currently as far as company or building? We're building current code enforcement, rehab, and what?
Well, two, code enforcement, two, building inspections. And then Mr. Jackson is the chief building official. And he covers both of those, code enforcement and building inspections. And then secretarial support, there's some places that provide assistance, administrative assistance.
Thank you, Bill, to read in.
Well, it's a pretty innovative way to leverage federal waters and address the needs throughout the city by letting focus on the CDVG area, is one of them anyway, and blowing through, like the training idea, having all of them blow through there. It's good, it costs $4,000 a year in the city, based on currency, Council.
Yeah, that will move forward to Monday night. Item 5C, any city ordinance on false alarms, Chief Burke?
Well, I blew these words up on my calendar. It's really big, so I thought I could see them, and I still can't see them. Mayor and councilor's packet says a proposal for consideration for false alarm ordinance. The proposal that you have, not its final version, it's just a draft of major points. And the draft is a compilation of standard alarm ordinances in the city. As you probably know, the city adopted a fee and fine schedule, I think last year. That includes fines for excessive false alarms. But there's no ordinance to regulate false alarms. The police department answers about 1,000 false alarms a year. Of course, this number doesn't include the false fire or medical alarm. And using two officers plus their vehicles to respond to an alarm and calculating the average time officers are on the scene of a false alarm, the conservative estimate to the city is that we spend over $40,000 a year answering these false alarms. And in reality, the number may be double that. And it's a fact that 98% to 99% of these alarms are false. We have no alarm permit system in place. So we don't even know who's supposed to have an alarm or any information about the alarm holder, even the permission. We currently have to depend on the alarm companies to give us the information or update us with contact information for the alarm. We have no monitoring system in place, no ordinance to keep up with the number of false alarms each resident has. We have several businesses in the city, for example, that alarms go off almost every morning as their employees show up to work. We can't ignore these alarms. So we respond. And sometimes our officers arrive on scene before cancellations called in by the alarm company. So such an ordinance would be an enforcement mechanism for us to hopefully reduce that. With no regulation of false alarms, there's no limit by ordinance to enforce a specific number of false alarms, meaning basically a resident business or main factory or facility can have an unlimited amount of false alarms each year. And the ordinance would exempt weather-related alarms. We have a storm come through, power goes out. That's all that everybody's alarmed. Those kind of things will be built into an ordinance. And they would not count for any false alarms. And they'll add, such an ordinance has proposed, we enact a series of fines and fees related to the permit process itself as well as the false alarm associated with a monitored or audible alarm that responded to by public safety. And so I know this is something new. And we just want to present it and get your direction on which way you want it to go on it. And I'll entertain any questions.
Questions? This would be on even unmonitored alarms or just an audible alarm that's going off? Can you respond to it?
Yes, sir. An audible alarm without being monitored would have to have a permit as well.
So obviously, new alarms would require permit. If a business today has an alarm, will they have to go all go and get permissions? And is it done on an annual basis?
Right, the plan now is anybody that has an alarm system that's monitored or audible will have to get a permit. Because as I mentioned, we don't even know who has an alarm because we've never had that in place. So initially, we'll have to have everybody get signed up. And I believe we discussed 180 days for this. And we may back that up or extend it if we need to. The idea is to try to get everybody to get signed up.
Was it $50 for the first sign up and 25 for annual renewal? Is that what I did?
For, I believe it was...
25 residential?
25 residential. And then an annual 25. $50 business, 75 a desk. Again, these are numbers just that were proposed.
But yet, manually, after the official permit fee, annual and yearly, you have to charge for a business or a residential. It's 25.
That's 75.
That's correct.
No, it's...
Residential's 25. Business was 50. The annual renewal was 75. Your business would give a long across $50.
No, 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 no. Initial permit fee, out of homeowner, out of alarm, initial permit fee is 25 bucks. And for me, it's 25 bucks every year there. Council member back, if he's got an alarm in his business, it's $50. And then it's $25 every year there.
Is there any minimum, is there going to be a minimum standard or certain type of equipment standard or any kind of, I mean, is there any inspections of the equipment or any kind of?
A monitored system, that'll all be handled by a company that monitors it. In the past, with such an ordinance, usually we have been notified by an alarm company if there's having some type of malfunction. So those false alarms don't count. The alarm company will notify sometimes if they're having to rework the alarm system for whatever reason. So there's a mechanism will be built into the ordinance for that so it's not being charged with a false alarm.
Kind of like what David gave us on the residential, 25. Many people carry those for various reasons, including insurance. They buy by hand for the residential and for the mortgage.
Who would, how are you going to monitor that on annual basis? How are you going to be able to know that these people are paying their annual their permit fee? I just don't understand the law. Do you understand what fee?
The permit itself will be kept on file at police dispatch. And that's, you know, something else we're still working out. Also, the amount, the number of alarms will be kept in dispatch as well. So when an officer responds to an alarm, you can ask how many they've added at that particular location. So we can know that number. The renewal is a charge that would help the city recoup some of the cost of responding to false alarms period. And that was why that was built in. But there again, that'll be your decision if you don't want to.
I see it's hard to... Many people won't pay that on annual basis. If they pay the first time, then... If they pay it the first time, and then if they're not getting an invoice, they're not going to think, hey, it's November, it's time for me to go down and pay my twenty-five dollar alarm permit. Secondarily to that, our issue is with false alarms, then let's make the false alarms punitive, let's don't make the system that aren't operating false alarms more paperwork for even your staff who are having to deal with these permits. I guess I'm sure I won't be that far.
Yeah, when I managed to deal in Sherman, you know, we did not have a pay register. Each year, we had an annual deal sent to us, and we fill out, get all the contact situation of this board, go back to the city, and they give us permanent for the post false alarm. There was no pay even worth paying, so nothing to pay for. The, as far as the alarms after six, you start getting them with a hundred dollars. You really had to go a year or none before you got off them. So it was a long way to deal. As long as you kept getting them, once you hit that six, then you started, you kept paying that hundred, so you waited a year without having a false alarm.
Some cities, and this is something I would request, they consider to have a maximum number, whatever number you want to put on at hand, for example, in a year's time. And with that many false alarms, their permit can actually be pulled, and they can determine whatever the issue is with their false alarms and convince you or the police, if you want us to handle that, that we are reinstating for their alarming behavior. The gist of what I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing is not to punish those that are abiding by what our ordinance says, or those that have the false alarms on a continual basis. Those, of course, those are the ones we would like to come in and comply with. I don't know that that's going to happen very much, but there's a possibility, and we might consider that as well, putting a maximum and then get your permit pulled. Not many of them won't respond, just meaning that they lose that permit.
So nine, you know, basically, it got to the map of that, having the alarms coming calling in that. I would tell them, this is called, I'm down the road, so I saw them, they're calling in. And they say that very special, we have problems shorts in our campaign, but nobody's probably thinking, we're talking to them, too.
Well, one of our issues is people don't respond at night. We get those night time alarms, they don't want to get up there and come respond, and they just say everything's okay. And then other times, we've found open doors, we've found things that we need secured, and we can't get anybody there because we don't have the contact. We can't get anybody there to come secure the place, and we can't sit on the business all that long either, so.
And that's why we had to get great contact, then we were dealing first, second, third, so far, the home phones, if we were contacting, you know, the alarms. I think the process, you mean, uh?
J's point there is that this is, PD's really become the, you want you to get out of bed tonight service, or can't the PD just go make sure everything's okay, I mean, I'm really, you know, that? So in some aspects, with some alarm holders, we're becoming a extension of the business. Instead of program, instead of there, just places PD tells.
Is the distribution primarily residential and commercial, or what, do we have any numbers breaking it down?
Well, in the mornings, they're mostly the business. The majority of alarms are residential. And I don't have it broken down specifically, but I can get.
But the majority of the false alarms are different?
The majority of the false alarms are, well, the majority of all alarms are false, but as far as the numbers, we get more of our business alarms in the mornings when employees come to work and set it off.
Right. But I guess, if I'm a business owner and have one, and my employees kept setting it off, and all of a sudden I'm getting taxed with a hundred dollar fee every time that happens, I bet they don't set it off anymore. I mean, I, as a business owner, will fix my problem, because that's now an expense on me. Today, we don't have that to turn.
Right.
You know? And I think that's our issue, we need to, at least in my opinion, we need to be focused on not adding another layer of you trying to manage permits or whoever's doing that, particularly residential stuff. I mean, it's just, I don't know that we're gaining anything by adding, adding an initial permit and certainly not an annual permit. I think figuring out what, because you can still, without a permit, you can track those that are your false alarms that you use, or.
If we have the information, and that's one of the things of the permit, I mean, if you want to call it a permit, I'm an information sheet, but we've got to have some type of information that we can use to try to contact them. That's a good problem for us. And to know, are we going to a resident or are we going to a business? Sometimes that's not clear.
Each one of them, I mean, they had a permit, but hadn't, I remember I had the number on it. When they issued that in Sherman, and they had that alarm, so that permit, so they knew it was, you know, the registration process, and then they would find out how the town did, there's a way to mask it. And it didn't cost us anything.
Yes, and you have a, you have permits, maybe, or.
Well, and I realize, she was before you retired, but we did that here at town, not that long ago, it was a few years ago, so. Question is, when I, when data, can we prove fines on, on false alarm at the time? So, I mean, we've got to be, sure that we can pass that to person that's getting his business every morning to be doing it. I mean, I'm assuming, I'm like here, listening, certainly, we can spend that fine then, whatever that program now is, but they don't take, I'm sorry, I don't want them off, so I just really want to show you guys, I check, but not sure. But I know it was not that wrong here, but it was at that base. I remember we kept it, though, what we did with it, like cell phones, home numbers, did the business on what it was, what it did, all.
I mean, just, we can't hear. The data tells me we've got a system problem, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent false. We have to change behavior, and I think that's what everybody's saying here. So, other way I'd say to do that is maybe have a one-time fee, where everybody gets registered, and then based on X number of events, then you start getting fined for false alarms.
I agree with that.
Well, when you get into a permit, you know, there are communities that do this, who charge fees, and their expectation is in some of the habits, like, and setting up the alarm, changing the, um, I'm not as inclined as you thought, but I'd have a permit at the door. And those are, some of those are.
I think, I know Mr. Hammond's been here, you take a lot of notes, and you've heard the discussion, this is a work session item. I think maybe we're giving you enough information that we should kind of go back and start framing it some more.
Can we summarize very quickly to make sure we've captured everything else?
Sure.
What I've kind of gotten is that maybe less of a permit, more of a registration process. I think it's a two-waits difference, but a difference on the less. That could be free charge, or it could be a one-time, one-time fee. We can monitor the alarms, I'm just thinking out loud here from this process standpoint. Maybe we set up an address directory, monitor a number of false alarms by address. If we go to one that haven't registered, we say, it's four, five, two, please. And you get four per year, kind of the number that's in ordinance now, four per year, where you can pop a hundred bucks for a false alarm. Could come back with an ordinance that may be some more massage than the kind of addresses those principles were on track, where council's mind might be.
I'm not, I don't know about the fee. I'm all for the fee for the punitive, but registration, yeah, but that's still the discussion.
Funny, if you have a fee to register, people may not, you know, if you don't respond anyways, so what's, what's going to happen to it if they have it?
The ordinance has proposed that if they don't have a permit, they get a fine, they get cited, they can get cited on the first false alarm.
It's, you know.
Thirty days for registration, and after that, you get it. That could be the stick for not registering. Registration can be free, but if we have to respond, it happens, then you get charged in the, in the winter.
You got a lot of alarms, though, that you'll never get that message out. It just demarts that, that message will not get out. You got a one-day news cycle on the still, and maybe something, I just don't have.
Okay.
I mean.
At that point, maybe it's, it's not that time to get one for you if you're not registered, and next time, maybe that's the issue.
Think overall.
Seven days forward, you get one warning, and after that, you charge.
Overall, what I hear you saying is, you don't, you want to make sure we address the system problems, as Councilman LeBak said, that you don't want to punish, I think we're here to get that message.
And don't want to create any more burdensome paperwork, monitoring deal for any staff, whether it's in your department, your department, or whoever's department. Want to fix the problem, upgrade the burden, among city staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, number five D, nine-one-one fees. Chief later.
Mayor, members of council, in your packet, you have a sample ordinance and some figures that's from the other home rule cities for their nine-one-one fees. And if you look, Denison is pretty close down to below a third of what we charge for our fees. The fees we charge today, the same fees we charged when we went into the nine-one-one business. We've never re-betrayed off into the fee structure. Since that time, our equipment costs have went up, our employee costs for laborers went up, and I feel like we're getting ready to have to spend more money on nine-one-one when the next generation starts coming in, where we have the ability to get texts and videos that comes in through our system, which we will wind up having to go to. So the staff recommending that the city council would consider raising our rates from fifty cents for residential to a dollar a month for business, from a dollar, from seventy-five to a dollar and a half. And the trunk, from seventy-five to two dollars for business. And then, we do not, at this time, have a fee set for forced over internet for a call, where the phones coming in through the cable companies will come through. And we're recommending that we set a fee for that at a dollar a month for each one of those. And I'll try to answer any questions council has. Trunk is a line coming into a business, kind of like Tacon Medical Center, where they'll have up to a hundred lines coming in with each trunk. And instead of charging per line, they just charge for the trunk that comes in. It may be, some businesses may have ten or twelve of them, some of them may have up to a hundred, some businesses have four or five trunks coming into, not in this area, but it's possible.
Do you recommend a increase?
Basically, yes, sir. That will increase our income approximately sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year off of that.
Is there any reason not to go to the average there on the fee? I know that's what we did with our building permit fees, when we actually came up to the average. I don't know if we want to.
I think what she was looking for was the, the round number, make sure that's a dollar.
Right.
But no, there's no, I think what we're asking for you is an increase. We presently are not funding the full cost of our nine-one-one services through nine-one-one fee. And that fee is dedicated for that purpose, and you're looking at trying to do some combination of our police and fire dispatch, which requires some expense. And the nine-one-one fee, the whole purpose of it is to help pay that expense. So, we haven't raised it, how many years, G thirty?
Since, like, correct me if I'm wrong, I was thinking nineteen ninety?
Nineteen ninety.
We said that, nineteen ninety.
We definitely didn't raise it, I'm just, I don't want to be the highest one in town, you know?
What would it take to get us to cost of the four? What's our deficit relative to number of households?
You won't, you won't be costing, you're looking at four or five dollars for that, because you.
We're going to subsidize regardless.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're going to subsidize our online services regardless. Right now, we cover a large portion of, not all of our, some of our personnel costs, but we still have all the capital acquisition, capital maintenance. Nine-one-one fees is an option covered, but not the full option.
Mayor said, I don't want to stand out like a red flag for the city, but I'm, I'm charging.
We need to make movement, so other questions, or what else would be bringing back? These are all about, but I don't think it's, you know, look at it, say that that, oh, that's a change, or we'll be in a month, and I don't. Thank you. That includes the regular session, and now council meeting, council now convenes a executive session, send up a chapter five by one, takes the government to, to consider possible purchases, exchange, lease, the value of real property, and hold discussion and take action on CBJ property acquisitions while we're seeing report, hoping to take an action on a planned exchange, and still take this out, I say, time is seven oh sixty.